I don't think there's a lot. Can you guys hear me? No. Is there a volume button? We can actually stand for the Pledge Allegiance. I don't need the Speaker for that. If we could just stand up and do the Pledge Allegiance. Right over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you actually would stay standing? Is it on? Can you hear me? Oh, good. So, I'd just like to recognize a few people have passed away. We've got actually a longer list than normal. We have Charles Burnham, Alan Craig, Pat Defazio, Bruce Fortier, Sally Susie, and Elizabeth Story. So if we give a moment of silence for those individuals, please. Thank you. And before you sit, say hi to everybody next to you. Just say hi and introduce yourself. So the tellers we have, if we have to have a kind of about. We have Carla Christensen, Teresa Mansfield, Susan Parody, and Dawn Burnham are all going to be tellers if we so need them for anything. If you are a non-registered voter, you need to be coming up here. If you're a non-registered voter, you need to be sitting up here on the stage. It's a little different than the gym because the gym, we had them on the side, but we have them up here if you are a non-registered voter. If you could come up here. Before we get started with the articles, we've got a couple of presentations. I think Dan Dusat is going to come up and read or introduce a couple of individuals for their service.
As members of the Fire Department, we're just going to recognize a few individuals who we've come to their, either their 20, 30, or even more time, years in the department. This year, Richard Dorit, 20 years on the Fire Department. Correction. Let me make a que-- that was 25 years. I'm sorry. And I'll do them again. And 30 years.
Correct. 30?
30 on there, yeah. All right, 30. I don't have my glasses on. So 30 years, George Stavros. Unable to attend this evening were also Lieutenant David Thompson, who is 25 years of service, and Deputy Chief Keith Carter, 40 years of service. And last but least, Dawn, do you want to come up during this? I would like to recognize a retiring member of our Fire Department. You'll probably hear from him later. A few times. So we have this, "From the town, we have a clock to be presented to Wesley Burnham in recognition of your 47 years of unwavering service upon your retirement to the Town of Essex, 2019."
And now, I believe we have... Andrew, why don't you come on up?
Good evening. Get me all right? There we go. Got it real close. Okay. First off, is the Volunteer of the Year. Well, we'll do the Employee of the Year. First off. Mandy Davis is the Employee of the Year. Started working for the town in 2001. Mandy is now a sole full-time clerk and oversees the part-time clerk. Mandy is in charge of billing, record-keeping, payroll, and receipts for the Department of Public Works, water, sewer, cemetery, and transfer station. Mandy is always polite and courteous and handles herself in a very professional manner. She works diligently to ensure that her colleagues have the tools they need to successfully do their job, from supplies and equipment to keeping track of budgets and timesheets. She is knowledgeable, friendly resource for residents who have questions about their water and sewer bills, about water quality, and about general issues within her department. And I'd like to give this award to her. This year's Volunteer of the Year Award goes to our, on our bicentennial year, as you guessed, it is Dawn Burnham. I have some more. Dawn has served as the Chairman of the Bicentennial Committee for the last five years. She also served as Chair of the Parade Subcommittee, and it was her goal to make the best celebration Essex has ever seen. I think in witnessing the parade, fireworks, food trucks, Essex Ice Cream Social, Essex Port at the Elementary School, Progressive Dinner, Madame Varney Tea, rededication of the ancient cemetery, senior citizen reception, and other presentations about Essex history that have taken place on the third floor of the Town Hall, she's been very successful in her goals. Love-dee indeed. Dawn, thank you very much.
Could I, Paul Rulo, coming up? Is Paul here? Oh, perfect.
Paul Rulo, DPW Board. I have the pleasure to hand out a 30-year effort for recognition of service to Mike Galli from the DPW. You know, so Mike, come on up. Mike's, um... Mike's Mr. DPW. He really knows everything about the town. He's touched every piece of the infrastructure in the town, and we're really fortunate to have him. Worked for the town for 30 years. You know, we gave him the job. He applied for the Superintendent position. It was an easy choice. You know, the selection process was quick. It was easy. We're glad we gave Mike the job. You know, he has all the technical skills and all the administration skills, but what Mike, makes Mike really special is himself. He's a gentleman to the town. He's, we get nothing but positive feedback on Mike's performance and how he treats everybody in town, and it's just a, it's just an honor to hand Mike an award for 30 years of service. And everyone in town should know that Mike's 30 years of service really has made a positive impact on how we go about our daily lives in town. So, Mike, it's my pleasure to hand you the award.
Wow. Did anyone have a calculator? Because I can't add up all the years of service we just recognized. Amazing. Thank you all for your service. I appreciate it. Could I get a motion to waive the reading of the warrant? Sir, a second? All those in favor? Thank you. Finance Committee. Does the Finance Committee support all or some of the financial articles on the warrant?
Yes, the Finance Committee has reviewed the articles and accepts them all.
Thank you. Again, I already said, non-voting members need to be up here. Without any further ado, I believe we're going to go right to Article One. One through six, by the way, are zoning, so they require two-thirds vote. So the first six are zoning, and I believe Wesley is up for Article One.
Good evening. Hi. Going to be here a while. I might as well get comfortable. Hi, what's... Hello? How's that? Hi, Wesley Burnham. Move that the town vote to amend Chapter Six, Section 6-2.2 definitions under use change of of the Town of Essex zoning bylaw as shown in Article One of the Fall Town Meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Motion's second. Any discussion? Wesley?
All right. I'll try to make this succinct as possible. What we're trying to do is essentially add one sentence to the current definition, which states, "Any change affecting currently undefined or non-categorized land use will be considered a change of use." We've had, we can call them arguments, discussions over whether an empty piece of land becoming something qualifies as a change of use, which in a lot of cases would trigger a site plan review or not. So, we want to put this in just to clarify and make it easier in the future to be able to define when more action is required based on the change of use probable.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, Ed Neal, 15 Western Ave. I move that Article One, as well as Two, Three, Four, and Five be indefinitely postponed.
Well, we're going to take them all one at a time, because I have to take them one at a time.
Very well. I move that this article be indefinitely postponed.
Is there, is there a second? Any discussion?
If anybody that visits Annie's Essex website knows, I object to voting on broad, broad issues that change our way of life or our property rights at special town meetings that are poorly attended compared to those of our annual town meetings. That being said, looking at these articles, given the disputes or discussions, as Wesley refers to them, over the Rivers Bend Restaurant, the Brew Pub, the potential of the pot factory on Eastern Ave., it seems to me that the Selectmen would be putting forward a slate or the planning board that provides more protections to the current property owners than less. And if you look at these, I'm prepared to debate each article individually, they all, except for one, are going in the wrong direction. They're reducing the protections that you all enjoy, and I just don't understand why we're going that route. I would like you to all vote to indefinitely postpone them, just so that the Selectmen know that at a meeting like this, they shouldn't be putting these kind of articles on that have, you know, a broad impact across the town, when they know that due to the weather, or the time of year, or whatever, that, especially the elderly, are going to be disenfranchised from participating in this vote. And so, I think, I think we should indefinitely postpone it. I can debate the, I can debate the merits of the article as well. In this case, this is an infringement on a property rights. Right now, we have, if you have a 40,000-square-foot piece of land with 150 feet of frontage, you can look up and you can have a business use, or you can have a residential use. This says that if you want to use it for a residential use, that you don't have to have a site plan review, and in conjunction with another amendment that they're putting forward as far as site plan review, it would exempt a single-family residence. So if all these articles pass tonight, this article would make it that you could, if you wanted to have a business, you, on a legally acceptable, conforming site, you would be subjected to a site plan review because it's considered a change of use. But if you wanted to build a humongous, single-family dwelling, you would not, because later on, we're going to exempt single families from the site plan review requirement. I would vote no on this. I think that we have, we have this framework of how our bylaws work regarding zoning. If you have this piece of land, you meet the standards, you can, you can do either a residence or a business, and I think that they should be treated equally. We don't need to single out one or the other. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion to indefinitely postpone?
I'd like to at least respond to that.
Sure.
Ed's not exactly correct. This particular proposal is actually going to require us to do a site plan review on someone who wants to come in and put a business on a legally existing lot. As of right now, without the empty lot being considered a change of use, they wouldn't have to. So this is actually adding the additional review that most of the time we would prefer to do. You know, it checks out the lighting, and the parking, and the screening, and whatnot. That is the purpose of this, is to define that such that it's no more questionable as to whether it applies or not. And when we get to the single family, I'll, I'll explain that further. I just assume, keep moving with this and passing.
Any more discussion on indefinitely postponing? Not the article, whether we should postpone it or not.
Betsy Ridge-Madson, 22 Sagan East Road. I agree, I think, with the postponed, indefinite postponement. I think that November meetings, without any calendar other than the 30 days' notice, are very, very difficult, and it's a big issue. And so, I agree with Ed Neal. I think that these things should come up at annual meeting.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of indefinitely postponing, say aye. Opposed? I believe, it's only a majority, so I believe the nay, so we will not be indefinitely postponing. So, we're back to the main motion. So, any more discussion on the main motion? On Article One? Yes, we can have seven, seven? Oh, 20 percent? Okay, if you want to, do you have your cards? Actually, we'll do the cards. I'll need the tellers. So, all those, all those in favor of indefinitely postponing, please, please raise your card. Okay, you can put the cards down. All those not in favor of indefinitely postponing, please raise your cards. The motion does not pass, so we are back to Article One. What's that? The count was, uh... Forty-two, yes, and fifty-six, no. So we're back to the main article, Article One. Any more discussion on Article One?
Hi, Rob Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street. I can confirm that during my time on the planning board, this did come up where there was a, a lack of clarity with regards to what do you do when you have something that is undefined, a land use that's undefined or uncategorized, and if someone wants to do something to it. So to me, it seems that this article is actually providing greater clarity. I'd also like to point out that a site plan review is a good thing. I believe that there's an opportunity, like where, you know, public hearing, people get to comment on it, what the plans are. So, I don't think that this is necessarily a detrimental proposal.
Any other discussion? No discussions. Okay. So all in favor of Article One, please say yes and raise your cards. I'm going to have them count again, just so I don't have to go through. So, you can say yes and raise your card. Okay, you can put those down. All opposed, say no, and raise your cards, please. The motion passes by two-thirds. It was, what did we say, 75? And we needed, we needed 74. Seventy-four for two-thirds. Seventy-five to...
What was the no?
Twenty. Correct. Article Two. Wesley? Hold on a second, Wes.
Hi, Wesley Burnham. Move that the town vote to amend Chapter Six, Section 6-3.2.1, Table of Dimensional Requirements of the Essex Town, Town of Essex zoning bylaw as shown in Article Two of the Fall Town Meeting.
Is there a second? Have a, the motion's been seconded. Any discussion?
All right, this, this one is strictly a housekeeping measure. Approximately, I want to say, May of 2015, we removed the requirement that this note refers to, and we missed removing the note and the reference in the, in the table only. So that, we just want to remove that, the reference to it. The Act has already been taken care of. We've already fixed the bylaw four years ago. We just didn't notice this until recently.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Two, raise your card and say yes. All those, I can, I can do this on my own. And all those opposed, raise your card and say no. The article passes by two-thirds. Wes, Article Three.
I was going to get tired of hearing me. Hi, Wesley Burnham. Move, thanks. Move the town vote to amend Chapter Six, Section 6-3.4.5, Radio, Telecommunications, Cellular, and Television Facilities Including Freestanding Type Tower Structures of the Town of Essex zoning bylaw as shown in Article Three of the Fall Town Meeting warrant.
Is there a second?
All right. Uh, this one here actually has two changes. We wanted to delete the current Paragraph A, which I'll describe, we'll talk about first, and replace it with a new Paragraph A, which reads, it adds, "Citizen ban radio was there, VHF was there. The UHF radios that the police are using now was not. Shortwave, ham radios for private, and we've added municipal uses to be excluded from the provisions of this section." That's primarily due to the, the radio communications that, right now, the town was may put up at some point in time. DPW, I believe, already has. Uh, the UHF radio and antennas may be required for the new public safety building for both the police and fire. We wanted to exclude that from the two-mile radius, which is currently in place. The second part of this is to replace paragraph C, which currently reads, "No tower shall be closer than two miles from any other tower." We'd like to reduce that to a half mile. Just seems a lot more reasonable.
Any, any other discussion? If you have a question, you can come on, come on up.
Hi, Shelley Bradbury, seventy-nine Eastern Ave. I just, could you just explain why that you, we need more cell towers? Like, why a half mile needs, is better? Why two miles isn't sufficient?
There is no specific reason why, other than the endless complaints of the people that I know in town that complain about the cell service. There is no plans. There's no requests from anybody to put any towers up. We're just looking at this because I do know we've had people looking to put additional cell towers up, whether it be, you know, in, in the church steeples or otherwise. But with that two-mile restriction, it was impossible. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways that it could be done. The idea was initially that we didn't want a whole forest of cell towers, and that's understandable. But I believe almost everybody here realizes that by Apple Street, at least with my Sprint, dead zone. South Essex, dead zone. Downtown, dead zone. So, if, if somebody else wants to put a tower up, then we're just reducing or decreasing the lack of incentive, I guess is the way to put it.
Any other discussion? If you have, if you have questions, if you have comments, or you're gonna speak, you can come on up, so you don't have to walk back and...
Meg Nelson, Belcher Street. And Wes, I'm just curious, did you look at increasing it to just a mile rather than two from the half?
Uh, I'm wondering if, uh, increasing it to a mile would accomplish something rather than going to two?
We're going from two to a half. Right now, we have a two-mile limitation.
So, what I'm saying is going from two to one instead of two to a half.
Discussion we got.
It just seems less...
So, my only concern is that, my only concern is why I'm questioning this is, we need to explore the, the effects that a cell tower has on us. There's a lot of things that are coming out with brain tumors, with effects on children, and as, as you live closer to them, it affects you. And that concerns me. And I just think we should explore this more and find out, you know, are we gonna inundate ourselves completely with cell towers and not know the facts, the phones, everything we have? We're guinea pigs. So, I just would like to have it considered a little bit more before we make this huge change. So...
John Garen, Belcher Street. Uh, I was here when they voted this in the first time, and there was a huge amount of discussion about the distances between and that people didn't want to be looking at cell towers everywhere across town. Half miles above twenty-five hundred feet, you could have them over and over again. And I, and I disagree. I believe the bylaw already says that you can put them inside of steeples or, uh, or inside buildings. They, they don't have to be, uh, two miles away from one another if they're hidden. Um, so, I think the two miles is sufficient. It already excludes the UHF. Um, I'm happy with that. Um, I'd like to amend it to delete the second paragraph. Uh, "No tower shall be located less than a half mile of any other tower from this," and leave it the way it is.
And I'll need that in writing, John. So, the, your amendment is to eliminate putting in C and leaving it at...
Changing C, I want to leave it alone.
Right. So, you know, no, you don't want to delete C, you just want to leave C alone?
Right.
Okay. Does everyone hear that? So, the, there's an amendment to change, continue with adding and changing paragraph A, but leaving C as it is at two miles. So... Is there a second to that amendment? I'll entertain any discussion on that amendment.
I support this amendment. Um, I'm in favor of the municipal being exempt so that the police and fire can do what they need to do to communicate. But it, the reality is that if you are not getting good cell service from the current tower on Powderhouse Hill, another one that's less than, that a half a mile away, isn't gonna do much for you. It's gotta be further away in order to pick up those dead areas. So, I just don't see that this, that part of this amendment is necessary. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Not the article, but the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment to leave in C, A, but take out C to the original article, please say aye and raise your card. All those opposed, raise your card and say no. The amendment passes. Back to the main article as amended, so that's leaving in paragraph A, or the article A and taking out paragraph C. Is there any more discussion on the main motion with that amendment?
Hi, I'm Barry O'Brien, twenty-four Grove Street in Essex. There's a number of things happening in digital telephony that this discussion doesn't really reveal people are aware of. One of the things that could happen in the next five years is that you go to microplacement of responders that are retransmitters that happen throughout a municipality. This is common in New York, San Francisco, and large cities. They're almost invisible. Under this law, if you restrict, if you start thinking, well, the way they put up towers is the way they put up towers ten years ago. They have a giant tower. Uh, you're gonna restrict the possibility of capitalizing on these emerging technologies. And, um, so you have to be careful about what you're trying to keep. What you're saying is you don't want a lot of giant towers throughout a town of thirty-eight hundred people. It's unlikely that's gonna happen, just from the standpoint of the way towers are...
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt. One second. Are you, are you talking about these, paragraph C, the two-mile limit kind of thing?
Right.
Well, we eliminated that. So, from going down to half a mile, so we're at two miles.
Exactly. But even a half a mile might get you into this situation. The, the other thing about this is that often, in the case of Gloucester, for instance, it wasn't until AT&T put up a tower up in Blackburn, did the municipalities have the opportunity to put repeaters on that tower at no cost to the municipality, because the carrier carried the cost of it, of putting up the tower. So, the only thing I'm suggesting is you have to be careful about what you think you're protecting the town against, if you don't understand sort of the way the technology is emerging.
So, I think the gentleman earlier made a pretty good point that, obviously, this is not as well... Oh, Ian Reappel, sixty-seven Western. Uh, gentleman earlier made a good point earlier that the, I mean, I was expecting this to be in the gymnasium and not in here, so it's definitely less attended. Something as important as deciding whether or not cell service can be expanded across the town, I think definitely warrants a broader audience. So, I would ask that we suspend or indefinitely suspend, or I'm not sure what to ask for, postpone until the next full town meeting to have a proper discussion on this.
If I could get that, you have to give me that in writing, to indefinitely postpone? Is there... Right. So, I, so... So, A changes, changes and puts, adds municipal to it, correct, as an exclusion? Correct. So, that stayed in as changed? Correct. I know. I think, I told them that was out. Does everyone understand that paragraph C is out, the two limit is staying, two, two-mile limit? Okay. Just want to make sure. Would there be any more discussion on indefinitely postponing this? Not the main, but postponing it?
If I understood prior gentleman correctly, he'd like to have more discussion over getting more cell towers. All right. Where we were at right now with the indefinite postponement, you're gonna exclude the municipalities from being able to put their antennas up, the, the UHF antennas. It's got nothing, I mean, we can revisit that at a later date, but it takes time. If you want to come in and make a appointment with the planning board, happy to discuss it with you there, maybe for me. But you, if you withdraw that now, we don't have to deal with it. Just a thought.
What I am trying to amend is the discussion around the mileage requirement?
That's already out.
Okay. So, but it's staying now at two?
Correct.
So, if we fit, if we vote down or postpone the amendment, does that still not change? Even though it's an amendment to the article?
We amended the article to take out the limiting, going down to one and a half, a half a mile. So, the two mile is staying in.
All right. Then you can get rid of the amendment, then.
So, you're gonna withdraw your...
Yeah, withdraw the amendment.
Your postponement. Got it. So, we're not gonna have a discussion on indefinitely postponing. We are back to the main article as amended with just paragraph A and not paragraph C, taking out the... We're there. I think we're already there. So, all those in favor of the article as amended with just A changing and not C with the limit, please raise your card and say aye. Okay. All those opposed, say no and raise your card. The article passes by two-thirds. Wesley, keep going. Keep going.
Hi, Wesley Burnham moved that the town vote to amend Chapter six, Section six dash three, point five, point two. Projects requiring site plan review of the Town of Essex zoning by law as shown in Article four of the fall town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Articles been seconded. Discussion, Wesley.
This has already been briefly touched on by Ed Neal earlier. Uh, the gist of this is, uh, we want to add one sentence to the end of the current paragraph, which states "Single-family residential use is excluded from this requirement." Right now, any change of use, which generally is, or was, up until tonight, we can go from nothing to something, is considered a change of use. Residential to a business use, to an industrial, A, B, whatever we've got categorized, triggers a site plan review. Or, on, on a floor print of greater than twenty-five hundred square feet. What we found over the past several years, as we've, people have been building rather large houses, and by the time you get done adding in the garages and the houses and the breezeways, we wind up putting, not a considerable amount of effort, but more than necessary. And it's another obstacle that most folks really don't need. And we wind up going through and essentially NA and not applicable virtually all of the steps. The amount of conditions that we've actually reviewed and added under site plan review for a single-family dwelling, I honestly don't remember doing any. All right. For an example, I can, if you want, I can, I can give you a brief rundown of what we look at. Traffic, parking, drainage control, existing vegetation, amenities, town character. Screening, hazmat, any other site-specific stuff. Generally, that's more conducive to a business or a commercial-type use, you know, where they're gonna be creating parking lots. And it may influence the neighbors. So, we want to, we want to look at the screening. We want to look at the type of lighting, make sure it doesn't impact the street and whatnot. Single-family residence really is unnecessary and has been nonproductive for quite a while. That's all I got.
Any other discussion on Article four? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article four, raise your card and say aye, uh, yes? Okay. All that opposed, say no and raise your card. The article passes by two-thirds. Wesley, Article five.
I'm gonna have to get even with the chairman. She took off the key west. Hi, Wesley Burnham, move. At the town vote to amend Chapter six, Section six dash five, point eight. Unregistered and inoperative motor vehicles, junkyards of the Town of Essex zoning by law, as shown in Article five of the fall town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Motion's been seconded. Wesley, discussion.
We've proposed adding a paragraph E to the unregistered and inoperative motor vehicle junkyard section. This is based on a lot of discussion we've had on a couple of different occasions relative to how to interpret unregistered and inoperative motor vehicles and how they should be dealt with. What we began to realize is, is with a strict interpretation and some of the arguments that were being used as we were trying to deal with individual properties with some of these issues, trying not to name any names, it's not my place. We really needed to define those businesses that are in that business. In other words, your average repair business, the way this could be interpreted and was attempted was, say, Gabriel Garage or Ernie's, or even Ed Neal's place, could have no more than two inoperative vehicles on the site at any time. Well, if your car's broke, you got towed in, it's inoperative. So, what we decided to clarify that issue was basically define that business land use, essentially of that sort, where the primary business is related to repair, reconditioning, rebuilding, and or sale of motor vehicles, shall not exceed a total of twenty unregistered or inoperative motor vehicles on the present premises at any one time. And that was, that's more of a reactive, it's a reactive measure to some of the arguments that were thrust upon us while trying to deal with primary issues, hopefully without embarrassing anybody.
Any other discussion?
Ed Neal, fifteen Western Ave, proprietor of Neal's Automotive Repair. I'm against this for, this, this is another one of these things where we have had for decades this protection against junkyards. Junkyards strictly prohibited in the Town of Essex. And then somebody builds one, and now we're gonna change the bylaw to make it that you can sort of have a junkyard. Uh, if you vote for this, be prepared that at any point in time, somebody can have twenty unregistered or inoperative vehicles in their front yard, unscreened. That's what, if you read this, unscreened or, or whatever, as long as their sole use is a business. So, somebody could buy a dwelling next to you that meets the, that meets the requirements for a business, become a repair shop, and then have twenty junk cars in various stages of being stripped in their front yard. I've been in business over forty years. I've never had to have that. If I need parts, I can pick up the phone, I could go online, and they're here the next day. We don't need to be dismantling in our residential areas. I'm totally against this, and if I were you, I wouldn't vote for it.
Andrew Spinney, fifty-four Lofken Street. Uh, I was wondering, Wesley, if you would take the word "unregistered" out of Section E and leave it "registered vehicles," because then it's customers' cars that... leave it "registered vehicles," because then it's customers' cars that could be in the shop being repaired, as opposed to unregistered, which would be cars that could be stripped.
Is that a formative amendment, or...
Well, it's a, it's a question.
A question at this point, okay.
It's a question at this point.
All right. In fairness to Ed, I understand part of what he's saying. Yes, there is the potential that someone could potentially abuse the whatever's here. We had pretty extensive discussions over a couple of years, actually, trying to deal with one or two issues related to this. And when we started looking around, Gabriel Garage is a fine example, and, I mean, they do a good business, they got three shops, they got three, three bays running, I don't know how many mechanics, they got two or three anyway. You look in their yard, it's not unusual for them to have 10 to 12 cars. Some of them for sale, he's got, he sells the used cars, which is, they're unregistered because, well, they're not owned, so. And we weren't trying to come up, we tried to come up with a reasonable number that the repair shops in existence right now wouldn't be able to be penalized. We've been fending off some enforcement requests on some of the existing businesses now, basically because we don't believe the intent of this bylaw was to exclude the current repair shops from operating in the current manner that most of them are. Yes, we've had a couple of abusers over the years, but they're well into the minority. So, I ask you to trust us, we've had a lot of discussion on this, and with the building inspector, who's the enforcement officer, and the planning board in general, we'd like to move ahead with it. If something does occur, we can always adjust it at a later date in time, but we were trying to make it reasonable and not penalize those already in business in town.
Any other discussion? Meg, you, you can come up and wait, if you like.
Betsy Ridge-Madson, 22 Sogan East Road. As I understand it, the change is adding Section E, and it seems to me that in Section C, we already have the possibility of having any of these things in an enclosed building or screened from public view. And screened from public view is, I believe, what happens at Gabriel most of the time, and could happen otherwise, and I don't understand why we need a new paragraph E. So I would vote it down.
Meg Nelson, Belcher Street. I think in a town like Essex, where we have no zoning districts, and where residential and commercial all combined together, that this is far too dangerous of a precedent, because my neighbor could, as Ed pointed out, suddenly have 20 unregistered cars in their front yard, and I don't want to see that in a residential zoning district. I, I think it's fine if Gabriel has it, or even Ernie's, or a place that's more, that seems to be in a commercial district, but on a residential street, it would be a total eyesore, and because we're in a situation where there's no zoning in Essex, I think that 20 cars is far too many.
Yes, I think that's, he respond.
I'd like to respond briefly to Betsy's concern, and what she brought up is exactly what we were dealing with. Sentence C, "No inoperative cars shall be allowed unless they're in an enclosed building or screened from public view." Now, if you drive by Gabriel, if you drive by Ernie's, you drive by Scott's Auto Clinic, no inoperative cars means, if your car broke down, they brought it in on the, on the back of a wreck, he's either got to hide it behind a fence, or immediately get it in the building. That's not how they operate. I mean, they don't sit there with an empty bay, hoping somebody's car's going to break so they can shove it in the, in, immediate. Now, it gets set down on the side, they do some troubleshooting, they order the pieces, whatever, they roll it inside, they do the repairs, it becomes operative again, you pay your money and it goes away. But this is what we were dealing with, with the folks that are saying, well, it says right there that these guys can't do that. And what we want to say is, is, yeah, they can. All right. I'd like to believe that there will be no abuse, I can't guarantee that, but right now, if we, if they wanted to follow up on it, the building inspector would have to enforce this, so you'd have no inoperative cars allowed, so if your car broke, you'd probably have to wait in the street until they were ready to bring it inside, and no unregistered, no more than 2 unregistered on the, on the property. So it's, that makes it very difficult for a repair shop. I know we used to run one, I mean, that was, my parents and I were in the repair business downtown. You can't possibly function with the way that this bylaw is currently written if it's enforced verbatim, and that's what we were getting into. We're just trying to build a little protection in for those businesses in existence.
Peter Crocker, 6 Lufkin Street. I'm just wondering if it makes sense to add another question, or sentence at the end of this amendment that says, "No inoperable and unregistered cars in the yard." So you can have a car that's registered but not working, and a car that's not registered but working, but no cars that are unregistered and not working. Does that make sense?
So, we're going to have Town Council speak on the article?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to explain a little bit of the, the regulatory background and the, the conundrum that I think they're trying to accomplish with this particular bylaw amendment. So, under the, the general laws, in order to operate a business of either selling used vehicles or purchasing used vehicles and storing them for purposes of taking them apart and using the parts, you have to satisfy two requirements. You have to be in compliance with zoning, and you have to obtain a license from the Board of Selectmen. And so the, the problem is, is that based on the way the bylaw is written now, the selectmen really can't issue any licenses, because these businesses can't be put anywhere under the zoning bylaw. Now, in order to get a license from the Board of Selectmen, they have to make a case-by-case determination that the property is a suitable place for this particular business. So, what's being done here is we're saying that these businesses can be allowed in town and have up to 20 vehicles on them, but they still have to go to the Board of Selectmen to get a license, and in looking at a license application, the Board of Selectmen then has the ability to say, "This particular location is or is not appropriate for this type of business." But the way that the bylaw is written now, the selectmen don't have that ability, because those businesses can't really go anywhere unless they meet the restrictive requirements that are in place.
Any other questions?
And when the selectmen issue a license, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
They can also, you know, impose limits on the number of vehicles that can be kept on a property, screening that has to be put in place, and other things to protect the neighbors. So it's, it's on a, an individual scale, as opposed to a town-wide scale.
Good. Any other discussion?
Just a follow-up question to your point, is there an appeal to the select board's ruling on their license by either the business owner or in a butter? Otherwise, is their decision final? And how does that protect, how does that protect in a butter?
Mr. Corbo?
Or a business owner?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. An individual, an applicant, or in a butter, aggrieved by the selectmen's decision, would be able to appeal to a court.
Any further discussion, Mr. Neal?
I don't think we need this. In practice, somebody calls me up, my car is broken, they get a tow truck, they have it towed into my yard. Nobody, it's, it's registered, nobody knows whether it's inoperative or not, when I'm looking at it, it's not an eyesore, it's not in various stages of being dismantled, it's just a car. You might see three or four cars there on a daily basis, usually by the end of the week, they're all gone. The same thing with Ernie, drive by Ernie's place, and he's not totally screened from view, but, you know, basically, most of the cars are gone, and there's not a bunch of dismantled or unregistered cars sitting there. And once in a while, somebody will call me with the car they just bought, and it doesn't have plates on it, they get it towed in, and it's only there for a few days with no plates on it while I repair it, road test it with my repair plate, and it's hauled away. That's how these, this is how the job works. The, the accommodation that's being proposed here is for, oh, and by the way, I don't have a, I don't have a used car license. The license, I think that Attorney Corbo was referring to, is if you want to be able to sell and display used cars, or if it was new cars, say, you go to the selectmen for that license, and that gives them the authority to do that. But just for a repair shop, I'm unaware of any requirement for me to get a license from the town for a repair shop. I have, my business is registered with the town clerk, but I never went in front of the selectmen and explained, you know, what I'm doing, it's never been revisited in 40 years, so this, this problem does not exist if you're not going to be taking cars apart and if they're screened from view. Most of the, like Gabriel Garage, they have a big fence, there's just a little opening, those, the vehicles are screened from view, there's people that pay to park them there, that, most of them are registered, they just don't have a place on their own property to keep the size vehicles that they have, so they, they pay to keep them there. They're not unregistered, inoperative vehicles in various states of dismantling. Just say no. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 5, please raise your card and say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, raise your card and say no. I'm going to say it does not pass by two-thirds. Article 6, Wesley.
One last time. This one should be easy. Hi, Wesley Burnham, move of the town, vote to amend Chapter 6, Section 6-14, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments of the Town of Essex zoning bylaw has shown in Article 6 of the Essex Fall Town Meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Motion's been seconded, discussion Wesley.
This article is to remove any, the entire section that created the temporary moratorium a couple of years back. Moratorium expired in December of 2018, we did renew it that fall, but the Attorney General denied us continuing it to December of this year, so it's no longer in effect. We're just effectively removing everything and replacing it with deleted in its entirety at Fall Town Meeting 2019, just to clean up the bylaws.
Any discussion, Mr. Neal?
I'm going to be in favor of this motion, because it really doesn't affect anything, but I would like to remind people that we don't have any zoning in place right now regulating where a recreational marijuana facility could be placed, and I believe, and Wesley can correct me, the, the planning board is in a position right now that they could begin to implement regulations like that. The, the proposal for a property on Eastern Ave, if they've already applied for the permit, would be exempt, but if that falls through, there's still an opportunity for the town to put in some meaningful restrictions on where something like this could go, the limitations, I mean, we already have it, I think, I think we're in the, the kind of ridiculous position where there are significant restrictions in our bylaws about where a medical facility can go for marijuana, but zero, and that's what we're voting, to remove everything tonight for a recreational one. So I would urge you to, yes, vote for this tonight, but then lean on the planning board to get on the stick, because this proposal on Eastern Ave may or may not go through, and there's no reason for us in the future to restrict it if we so see fit, and that's the purpose of the planning board, and bringing it before a well-attended town meeting. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say yes and raise your card, please.
Yes.
All those opposed, raise your card and say no. Passes unanimously by more than two-thirds. Article 7, Mr. Fippen.
I, Peter Fippen, move that the town vote to amend the town's general bylaws by adding a new Section 7-9 titled "Bylaw Regulating the Use of Certain Plastics for Commercial Establishments in the Town of Essex," as shown in Article 7 of the Fall Town Meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Article's been seconded, Mr. Fippen.
So this article is to ban Styrofoam and plastic, single-use hot stoppers, stirrers, straws, service ware such as takeout containers, cups, lids, knives and forks, things of that nature. I just want to say that plastic does not go away, it just breaks down into smaller and smaller particles. So think about every single piece of plastics ever been created is still in the environment somewhere. These establishments can use biodegradable or other types of reusable materials to replace these things, and I think it's a, it's a small thing, but we need to really do our part, especially being in a coastal community where a lot of this plastic ends up as microplastic in our waters, in our shellfish, in plants, and everywhere else. So I encourage voting on this article.
Good evening, Alan McCoy, 45 Main Street. I'm, I'm a board member at Seaside Sustainability, K-PAN-based nonprofit. Seaside, working in concert with area individuals, town governments, and businesses in a variety of ways, is dedicated to protecting and improving the health of our coastal waters. Our neighboring towns, Gloucester, Rockport, Ipswich, Manchester, Hamilton, and Beverly, have already taken steps to ban single-use plastics. The ban in Rockport, which was crafted by Seaside, is one of the most comprehensive bans in the US, and there is currently a movement statewide to take on this challenge. And our hope is to have Essex join our neighbors in this important work. The bylaw is not an end as in itself, as Peter mentioned, but it is an important step in the right direction. Recycling market is in flux, as you probably know, and can be very confusing. Plastic does not compost, and only a limited few types of plastics are recycled, if recycled at all. The rest ends up in landfills, gets burned, and creates toxic gas or finds its way into the environment. Ultimately, the goal is to reduce our need for packaging of all kinds and to move toward reusable and easily recyclable options. In the interim, the most important step we can take is to keep as much single-use plastic as possible out of the waste stream. And in addition to its much-publicized hazard it poses to marine life while intact, plastic rather than biodegrading, as Peter mentioned, breaks down and becomes microplastics, which easily is absorbed by land and marine life, increasing... which easily is absorbed by land and marine life, increasingly posing hazards to our health. Fortunately today, there are many reasonably priced alternatives to single-use plastics, straws, stirrers, and stoppers, and there are more products become available all the time as the demand for these items increases. I support this article and hope that we, the citizens of Essex, will join our neighboring towns in this important step toward better stewardship of our environment. Thank you.
Alden Blodgett, Ten Orchard Road. I agree, I support this wholly, uh, but I am, I have just one question. I don't understand why we have the, um, paragraph in each of these, um, that, I think it's Paragraph E, that eliminate, that does not eliminate the sale of bulk, uh, these items in bulk. I just, I don't understand why we have any of it allowed. So, that's my question, why do we have the exemption?
That exemption is for stores that sell packages of those types of products, yes. We didn't feel that that was fair at this point to go after them.
Why?
It's, well, it's a, it's not, not what we're after because they're being reused, you know, who knows where they're being used. So, it's not as effective on the Town of Essex, but, um, it's also an extra step that we need to take. And, yeah, I mean, there is no real good reason other than that it, that it is a different, um, target audience.
Any other discussion?
Well, in, in that case, I'd like to propose an amendment, which is to eliminate the exemption.
I'll need that, what's the amendment, it's going to read, we need that in writing.
Yeah, it's to eliminate the exemption of each of these items.
I think it's reference, I think that's referenced three times in the, uh, different paragraphs. Yep. So, is there a second to that amendment to strike Paragraph E out of three sections, I believe it is? Okay. So, any, so the, the amendment will eliminate, I believe, Section E, which allows retail sale of bulk items in three different sections. So, is there any discussion on the amendment to this article?
Can you be specific what paragraph?
So, Seven nine dot three, Section E, disposal plastic?
Sell straws, straws, or hot stoppers.
Right, it's Section E that, he was eliminating the E, not the whole paragraph, just the E part that allows establishments to sell bulk items. When they're packaged for retail sale, that's bulk.
When they're packaged for retail sales, they use outside the premises.
Correct. That's what he,
And a prohibitive from selling straws, stirrers, or hot stoppers when they're packaged for retail sales somewhere else.
He wants to eliminate that so they cannot sell bulk, retail items.
I don't see any bulk.
Retail sales. Which, which by default is almost bulk. No one's selling one straw at the store. Dan?
Uh, Dan Doucet, John Wise Avenue. I have a question through you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
From Town Council. If you eliminate Section E under single-use plastic bags, would that mean we couldn't buy trash bags in the Town of Essex?
In the definitions, it states four mils or less. I don't know what a trash bag thickness is, but is, if it's, if it's, um, four mils or less, then that's correct. Okay.
So, so right now, is there any discussion on the amendment eliminating three E paragraphs from this original article?
John Garrett again. I, you, you also can't not only buy trash bags if you take E out, you also can't buy the layer of film that you need to put down that you buy at the building center for underneath your, your foundation, which is between sixteen and eighteen mils, some of them. So, I think this is poorly thought out, leave it alone. Um, and then I would like to speak to the original motion afterwards.
Any discussion on the amendment eliminating three E paragraphs?
Uh, that film you're talking about is not a bag, is it a bag?
No, but it's plastic, and the next section says,
we're talking,
Single-use plastic.
Well, defined as a bag.
So, any more discussion on the amendment that would eliminate the three paragraphs from the original article? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your card and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the article, the amendment to the article, say no?
No.
The amendment does not pass. So, we're back to the original article, leaving the E in. John, I believe you wanted to discuss that.
With all due respect to everybody who spoke, I agree. We've got a big plastic problem in this, this country. But I don't think we need this bylaw in Essex. I'm wearing plastic right now, and a lot of us in here are. These are all recycled items that are done through plastic. Dunkin' Donuts this week came out with, we're no longer going to use styrofoam. I go to the restaurants and I walk home with a cardboard box already. Many of them are doing this. I don't think we live in the People's Republic of Essex. I think we live in the Town of Essex, which is a little piece of New Hampshire that fell off and landed here. Live free or die. So, I, I think, um, we, we don't need the bylaw. If you really want to do this, the group that put together the bylaw and have done it in other communities, I would suggest you go to the few establishments that already sell plastic or re, uh, reused, uh, this type of, uh, plastic item, single-use items, and ask them not to do it anymore. Or if you don't want it anymore, don't shop there if they refuse to. Everybody's already changing it over. We don't need a bylaw like this to be a police state. Leave it alone, go to the, this isn't going to be effective for another two years. This could come back to the annual town meeting, and we, maybe we could come back with the five or six establishments. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think offhand, who does, uses these bags now? Who uses the straws? There aren't many of them. Dunkin's getting rid of them, they've, they've already made a concession.
No discussion here, we'll just stick to the topic.
Regardless, I don't think we should vote this, and this isn't Essex.
Okay, before I ask for any more discussion, I'm looking to get some leave for the meeting. We have a couple of people that want to speak that are not registered voters, I believe. Couple here, is anyone from Seaside here going to speak? Okay, so I think we have three people that would like to speak that, you don't want to speak? Oh, so I thought someone was, I was approached, someone wanted to speak from Seaside, okay. So, right now, we have two non-registered young voters here in town that would like to speak to the article. I need, I need the voters, if they so choose, to approve that. So, all those in favor of allowing these gentlemen to speak, say aye.
Aye.
Any that opposed? Take it away, gentlemen.
Uh, hello, my name is Oscar Campania, and I live on Eighth Centennial Grove Road in Essex. I think we should ban single-use plastics because they are getting into, well, people are, they're lightweight and they fly out of cars when you're taking them to dump. We can dispose of them, and then they end up flying into the ocean because we are right on the coast, especially the lake, because there's a lot of parties down there, and people just leave it trashed. So, we were actually, uh, cleaning the lake, and we just started moving down the street, and moving down the street, and then to the rest of Cape Anne, we've set up Cape Anne Trash Team. We, we go cleaning up trash throughout Cape Anne, and I think we should ban single-use plastics because they are a majority of the problem. Anything you want to say?
Uh, I don't know.
No? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion on the article? Yes, I think I allow three. Okay, that's fine, sure, go ahead, state your name when you get up there, please.
My name is Cara Glennos, I live on Six Hundred Road. I just want to say that I think these single-use plastics, they are just, they're absolutely everywhere. I took my senior pictures in September on, on Canoma Point, right on that beautiful beach. Everyone loves it there, it's, I always see the boats going by. But while I was there, I just, I noticed, picking through the little rocks in the sea glass, I noticed these little tiny, like, caps from water bottles, pieces of, like, utensils and containers and things that I could realize that, that I realized that were being dumped out of boats, um, off the docks, and just people playing on the little beach with their kids with these little single-plastics things, and picnics, and everyone uses these little forks and, I don't know, everyone that, I just, I realize everyone that goes to these places and uses them and brings them out, leave stuff everywhere. And I think that the overall, like, ban or limiting on these will help overall just kind of, uh, like, get rid of the, the big problem that we see and, and keep our beautiful areas beautiful. And, yeah, I don't want to see anything changed, I want to see this place stay nice and beautiful and just, yeah, so I'll have to say.
Hi, Shelley again, Seventy-Nine Eastern Ave. I was going to say the same thing. I go to the Cox Reservation and to Canoma Point, I'm always picking up plastic. I'm aware of it, even the very small parts. I'm on the Board of Seaside Sustainability as well, and I'm so proud of what they've done around our community. I don't find it policing, I think it's a huge responsibility for each of us to take. And as I say this, and I'm trying to connect, I don't know how this works, but I think if we ask this of our businesses, then I think we need to ask this of ourselves at the transfer station, that it should be enforced that we do recycle. We throw the trash in the incinerator, but I see people who have paper and cardboard and plastic that just put it in this incinerator and don't just go down to the two containers. So, I really think that should be enforced. And I also miss the swap shop because it's upcycling, and I wonder how that can come back. So, I'm trying to connect this all, the responsibility of, here we're asking for the businesses to do this, but can we do this as well as a town? So.
Okay, anyone else want to speak? Okay. You know, someone, bring in the microphone? There's a mic, we have a portable microphone. We have a portable mic.
Good evening, my name is Shan McAdoo, I live at Seventeen Apple Street. And while I agree with the, um, sentiment that's being talked about in terms of the ban of plastic, I'm concerned about the nature in which this is being done. As I understand it, and I could be wrong, this is a special town meeting that was called with about thirty days' notice, and I feel like the other side of this, the economic development side of this, is being underrepresented in this discussion. And I believe that if you really want to do this the right way, you should work to include them in the discussion. Some have gotten up and said, approach them individually, but certainly before you pass a mandate like this that forces them to something, you should give them the opportunity to be a part of the discussion, which you're not doing right now. And I feel like whatever you pass tonight is a half-hearted measure because you haven't included them. I feel like if you go through your entire process and allow them the opportunity to speak and then pass it, they've at least had the opportunity to address it from their side. Thank you very much.
Brenner, you want to address the question?
So, the question was raised as to whether the business community was involved in the development of this. The proposal was shared with them, uh, the Essex Merchants Group and the members of the Essex Division of the Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce. It was actually discussed at one of their meetings. So, the, uh, commercial establishments were brought into it as far as what it takes to call a town meeting, a Fall Town Meeting, which is a form of a special town meeting. The legal standard is fourteen days, and four-day annual town meeting, which we have every spring, is only seven days. The selectman did sign the warrant about thirty days in advance, but they actually could have signed it later, just to speak to what the notice requirements are. But in advance of them even signing the warrant, there was discussion with the business community.
Further discussion?
The time is now. Why are we waiting for, oh, sorry, Nat Crosby, Thirty-five Essex, uh, Thirty-five Addison Street? The time is now, why are we waiting till January twenty-first, twenty-one? The technology to change from these plastics, single-use plastics to not, isn't here. We've already hearing that businesses are changing over nationally and locally. There is no, there's no burden that we're placing on these businesses that we're asking to change. So, I would like to write an amendment to change this to June first of 2020 and not January twenty-first of 2021.
Is there a second to that? I'll just need that in writing. So, that's eliminating the January twenty-one effective date to June of 2020?
Yes, one of the comments we did hear from the commercial establishments was, they would like, uh, as much time, and generally, a year is enough time for them to get rid of their inventory and do the research and start to get new compostable and recyclable materials to replace what the plastic is.
Any further discussion on the amendment that would actually, in effect, back up the effective date by six months, I believe, from January 2021 to June of 2020? Any discussion? All those in favor of amending that, please say aye and raise your card. All those opposed, say no and raise your card?
No.
The amendment does not pass. So, now we'll go back to the main article on plastics.
Just wanted to ask, I guess it's two questions. Board of Health is going to be enforcing this. Is our Board of Health agent trained in all of the different plastics options? If not, what's it going to cost? And two, have we budgeted any money to get her trained in order to enforce this thing?
Mr. Zabricki?
Uh, no, there's been no special money budgeted to date for that. I do not know whether she has particular training that's necessary to recognize each type of product that's being discussed in the bylaw.
Any other discussion? Sure.
Tina Lane, Lanes Road. I have a question about the Board of Health. I have a question about the Board of Health. What, what is it going to look like, this inspection or the monitoring of the single-use plastic by businesses? Is this a weekly thing, or do people tell on people? What does it look like? Because this, this is something that, this, the Board of Health is going to have to do. So, I just want to know what that looks like. Have you thought about it?
By chance, I have someone from the Board of Health that is not a voter, but she's willing to speak as long as I get permission from the audience, if, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Hi, I'm Erin Kirchner, I work for the Board of Health. I don't think any of the board members are here right now, but I can say I've been in conversations with our, um, food inspector, Bobby Cody, who works full-time in Marblehead. She works in a couple of other towns, and she's already dealing with this. The enforcement of this by- The enforcement of this bylaw would be part of our regular semi-annual food inspections. And then if there are complaints, we would deal with them as, the same as any other food service establishment complaint. So there would, it would be a routine and complaint-based, but we're in all of the establishments at least twice a year anyway. Does that answer?
Any other discussion?
I've been in communities recently that have passed this bylaw, not only in Massachusetts, but in other states. And every time, they say, "Do you want a, do you want a bag?" And first time, I said, "Sure." And, okay, that'll be 10 cents. So don't think it's not going to cost you when you get a non-one-time-use bag, because you're going to be paying for a more than one-time-use bag. And, yeah, the next time I went to the grocery store, I had one in my back pocket. That's true. But I also want to point out with everybody talking about the pollution everywhere they see, it isn't the businesses that are out there putting the bags and the bottle tops underneath at the beach or around the rocks. It's you and me. So again, it isn't, I, I think this is a bad bylaw. It's not necessary. We've got a year to reach out to every single business in this community and say, "We want you to do this." Or, you know what, we will come back to town meeting and do it. But let them do it first. Don't be putting this on them and saying, $25 penalty, up to $300, or whatever the numbers were. I don't think we should vote for this.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 7, raise your card and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, raise your card and say no.
No.
The article passes. Someone's got to keep me on my toes. Ruth?
Ruth Perrine, 15 Lufkin Street. I, Ruth R. Perrine, move that the town vote to amend Chapter 5.
I can't hear you.
Ruth Perrine, 15 Lufkin Street. I, Ruth R. Perrine, move that the town vote to amend Chapter 5, Article 4, Section 1, Subsection P of the Town of Essex bylaws concerning resident parking stickers, as shown in Article 8 of the Fall Town Meeting Warrant.
Is there a second? Discussion?
The goal is to align the resident stickers with the transfer station stickers to make it kind of the town clerk's job a little bit easier, and honestly, for the residents, so that we know that we're renewing these stickers at the same time each year.
Wesley, you have a question?
This says December 31st. The gumstick is, inspire, that happens? Deleting.
Deleting that.
So there will be no prescribed?
Oh, okay. That might, I heard that. Yeah. Pass it on the grid.
Y'all set, Wes? Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 8, please say aye and raise your card.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 9.
I, Andrew Spinney, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $21,600 and to transfer from the purchase of vehicles and major equipment that qualify as capital purchases fund the sum of $21,600, for a total of $43,200, to purchase and equip a police cruiser and to authorize a board of selectmen to dispose of the cruiser being replaced by the purchase or sale of trade if desired.
Is there a second? Discussion?
It's time to replace another cruiser. They wear out, and they're looking for a new one. That's all that's up with this.
Any further discussion? Mr. Neal?
If it's settled, we're keeping it. Can I just ask how many vehicles are going to have on the road? Five. Five. Thank you.
I believe this is a two-thirds vote, Mr. Corbo. Yes? No more discussion. So all those in favor of Article 9, please raise your card.
Aye.
I don't need, I'm going to, all those opposed? Article passes unanimously by two-thirds. Got to state the two-thirds. Article 10.
I, Ruth R. Perrine, move that the town vote to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget as voted under Article 8 at the May 6, 2019 Annual Town Meeting by increasing the Selectmen's Budget Line item, known as Advertise Town Resources, from zero to $23,500, and to transfer from free cash the sum of $23,500 to fund said increase.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're, the, we're just looking to refund the Advertise Town Resources account. We've, at the last meeting, we had it down to zero, and we're just looking to replace that money.
Different advertising, the pocket parks, the merchants? What's that? Yeah.
So the town meeting adopted a number of years ago a state statute that allows public money to go back to the business community for advertising and promoting the features and attractions in the town. And that was done for several years at this budget that we're in now, fiscal year 20, since there were cuts that needed to be made. Rather than cut things to the business activities of town departments, something like that was one of the things that was trimmed. The Finance Committee has looked at it, looked at revenue forecasts versus what has actually come in, and there's sufficient money from other revenue to put this back into the budget. The money is spent mainly on advertising. It goes out to bid, and the group that's usually gotten it is the Essex Merchants Group, and they put together an advertising campaign to attract people to the various offerings here in the town. Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article, oh, sorry. Got to be quicker. Almost got out of there.
Tina Lane, Lanes Road. Since, since this started, the budget was originally $5,000. The next year, it doubled to $10,000. The next year after that, it doubled again to 20. Now it's at $23,500. And I just want to know, do these merchants that want this town money, do, don't they have their own advertising budget? Why is it that the taxpayers of the town have to pay for their advertising? I know that they use the argument that the meals tax, that we have the meals tax, and that's how they got this advertising line item in the budget. But is there any sort of correlation between the amount of money that we get from the meals tax and the advertising budget? Because I think if the advertising budget was zero, we would still get a huge meals tax because we have awesome restaurants. And as a citizen, I go to restaurants all the time, and I pay the meals tax. And now, as a taxpayer living in town, I also have to pay for the restaurants and the businesses in town to advertise. So I just, I just never understood this line item. I, I think $5,000 was okay, but now it's like climbing up, and I don't like it.
I think Donna, we, okay, Rob, go ahead. Go ahead, Rob. She's yielding.
Rob Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street. I'm also on the Finance Committee. I'm kind of guardedly for this. As Ms. Lane mentioned, this has gone up exponentially in the last five years, from about $5,000 to $25,000. You know, one of the challenges, of course, that you have with advertising, it's like the joke that, you know, 50% of my advertising is effective. I just don't know which 50%. We did have, we've had several discussions with the Essex Merchant Group about the expenditures that they've made with this. They, I, it would be great if they could actually come today and talk about how they decide to use the money. I think that would be good. I would recommend that the selectmen keep an eye on this. I don't think it should go up much higher. I mean, look, the tough thing is, is that, like, we want to support local businesses in Essex. We wanted, I mean, other towns like Gloucester, they, the Town of Gloucester, you know, the city of Gloucester provides funds for their merchants group, whatever. However, we're not Gloucester. So it's something to kind of keep, keep an eye on. I would say that the meals tax is a little bit of a red herring about, about this. But anyway, I, I would say that the Finance Committee is for this. I am, I am guardedly for this as well.
Further discussion?
Hi, Donna Roy, 46 Main Street. I am a member of the Essex Merchants Group, and there's probably several others freckled around the room. When the line item was cut, I think it was an awakening for the Finance Committee because we did come before them and start discussions about how exactly the money is spent. And I think that there is, everybody has a right to wonder where the money goes. The thing is, it was created through town meeting, that there would be a line item for this. The Essex Merchants Group is just one group that has solicited for the funds, and it has been given to them repetitively. And it's been given to them repetitively because of what they've been able to do with it. Now, I agree, it is very hard to say where an advertising dollar works and where it does not. But we have seen the difference in the funds being cut. We have had to cut back on what we've been able to do for the community. And it is a community as a whole, not just the restaurants. There are businesses that are faltering in Essex due to inactivity. We are seeing antique shops leave the community, unfortunately. And it was a mainstay here, that people would come from out of town, spend the day enjoying the sights, going to the museums, doing some antique hunting, and then sitting in a restaurant. We're in a position where that butt in the seat, buying that meal, is bringing roughly a quarter of a million dollars to this town. So we may be going to those restaurants, and you'll see me there quite often, as an empty nester, I'm there. And I'm paying that same amount that's in addition. And as a taxpayer, I can tell you it's well worth it, because when you see the people coming to town and taking advantage of what we have to offer here, it makes a big difference. And that amount of money that is the tax money, the food tax, without it, we'd be up here debating where and how we are going to increase taxes to make up that difference. I think we do a good job advertising this town and letting surrounding communities and far beyond know what we have to offer here to day visitors. And I encourage you to vote yes for this, because I think it is important to this town to embrace the business community and keep things moving forward.
Any other discussion?
Hi, Allison Williard, 1 Dodge Street. Also a member of the Finance Committee and the liaison to the Essex Merchants Group. After we cut the line item, we've worked intimately with the Essex Merchants Group. We put them under a very high level of scrutiny in terms of their scope of work, their return on investment, looking at their numbers, their advertising, how that translates into attractions to Essex. I've had the opportunity of attending some of their meetings. And I will say that the business owners there did not, they were not promoting their restaurants or promoting their businesses. They were promoting the brand of Essex as a whole. They promote cultural events, nonprofit events. So it's more than just, it's not them advertising for their own individual business. It's an effort, a collective effort, to brand Essex. And I will say, the Finance Committee does support this article, and we wish that you vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Hi, Betsy McKean, 35 Lufkin Point. Keep it super brief, because I hope that we can move forward with voting. But I'm pretty new to the town. I've been here for five years. And when I first moved here, I was super impressed by the visitessex.org website that is the only place to find information about all the events in town that some of have, as you pointed out, some of which have nothing to do with the businesses. They, as the race director of the Happy as a Clam Race, they've helped me promote my race, which all the money goes to the school. The Essex Merchant Group has been wonderful as a town resource, and from someone coming from outside the community to the community, they are, they, the advertising's amazing. So I know that that is only one use of the money, but I think it's a very worthwhile use of the money. Thank you.
Any, anyone else? All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your card. All those opposed, raise your card. It passes. Article 11.
I, Andrew Spinney, move that the town vote to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget as voted under Article 8 at the May 6, 2019 Annual Town Meeting by increasing the Selectmen's Budget Line item, known as Town Events Incidental Expenses, from zero to $5,000 and to transfer from free cash the sum of $5,000 to fund said increase.
Is there a second?
This $5,000 throughout the year pays for police details at events, dumpsters, you know, small-ticket items and medium-sized items that we need to fund to have some of the events in town. That's it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 11, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 12.
Paul Rulo, Low Hill Road, DPW Board. I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer. I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, sum of $17,832, to fund a deficit in the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund.
Is there a second?
Maintenance at the cemetery is a, we're short $17,800, and this money from free cash will help us maintain the cemetery until July 1st.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 12, raise your card. All opposed? Raise your card. No one. Okay, I see some blue cards. I just want to make sure it's unanimous. It's unanimous, folks.
Why are you turning away? Why are you turning away? That's all. I just want to know why.
Well, the budget for the cemetery maintenance comes from, it's called the Perpetual Care Fund. And some of the purposes of the cemetery lot goes into an interest payment account. And the interest that is secret from that account comes from the cemetery. You know, it's a little weird, it's a virus. You know, they have interest, therefore, you know, you're going to have to. I, Daniel Doucet, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $7,200 to serve as a match to a federal state, it's a federal grant program, for the provisions, configurations, and installation of radio equipment for the Essex Fire Department and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second?
Uh, back in July, we submitted a grant application with the towns of Middleton and Topsfield. We're partners with them at the Regional Communication Center, and, um, the grant was for portable radios for the three fire departments. Our radios are becoming end of life. So, for $7,000, we will get approximately, uh, the grant was for $451,000 between the three communities, uh, which the communities were responsible for just over $21,500, which our portion is roughly the $7,161.91, I believe is the exact number. But, uh, that will allow us to replace all our radios for our officers as well as each seating position in the fire apparatus. Uh, when anyone goes into a scene or a fire in a building, uh, they have to have communications in case there's any type of distress or an emergency situation.
Any further discussion? John?
What are you doing with the old radios?
Uh, the ones that are usable, we're gonna issue to some of the personnel, and the other ones will be traded in.
All those in favor of Article 13, just say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Article 14.
I, Benjamin Buttrick, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to fund the town's other post-employment benefits trust fund, OPEB.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Sure. Uh, what OPEB is, is basically, um, it's, it's, it's to fund healthcare payments for town employees, uh, who have retired. It's a, it's, it's sort of like a pension, but for healthcare. It's a long-term liability that the town faces. All municipalities face this. We put in money each year as we go to pay that liability down the road.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 14, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
I, Richard Ross, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the total sum of $53,000 to be allocated as follows. Building Capital Improvement Fund, $10,000. Recreational Capital Improvement Fund, $10,000. Purchase of vehicles and major equipment that qualify as capital purchase fund, $10,000. Town Library, Town Hall Library Repair and Maintenance Fund, $10,000. Conomo Point Repair, Maintenance, and Improvement Fund, $10,000. And the Municipal Street Lighting Repair and Maintenance Fund, $3,000.
Is there a second? Any discussion, Mr. Ross? Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 15, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I, Peter Fippen, move that the town vote to transfer from the Town Technology Fund the sum of $5,000 to complete the interconnection of the town's own fiber optic municipal area network with similar networks from other communities, including the cost of police detail and/or anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second?
This is simply to connect, uh, the town's, um, computer network up with a, our data storage and, um, um, ultimate backup. And so, we need funds for police details, things of that nature, to connect the, um, the fiber optics.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 16, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Unanimous.
I, Peter Fippen, move that the town vote to transfer from the Town Technology Fund the sum of $7,500 for the purchase and installation of computer equipment and a, any other related software and peripherals.
Is there a second?
This is to upgrade, I believe, 21 computer systems in the town to connect to the fiber optic, optics and take advantage of the, uh, the new, um, facilities that that will provide.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 17, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Mr. Spinney.
I, Andrew Spinney, move that the town vote to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget as voted under Article 8 at the May 6, 2019 annual town meeting to increase the operator wages line item in the Department of Public Works Highway Department budget to $27,000 and to transfer from the fiscal year 2020 trash contract line item in the Department of Public Works Transfer Station Recycling Department budget as voted under Article 8 at the May 6, 2019 annual town meeting, the sum of $27,000 to fund said increase.
Is there a second? Mr. Zabricki.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As you may know, the town has a solid waste contract with a company called Covanta. So, those are the people who haul the trash away from the transfer station. They recently announced that they no longer wish to provide their own employee. Um, you may have known the gentleman named John, who was attending the transfer station. They don't want to provide that service anymore. They told the town that they would, uh, make it worth our while for the town to hire its own employee. So, they've removed from the Covanta contract a couple of elements that are actually, uh, much in excess of what it will cost the Department of Public Works to hire their own employee. So, we'll actually end up saving money, uh, because Covanta, uh, just didn't want to offer that service anymore. And so, this just allows money that would have been paid to Covanta to instead go into a wage line so that the Department of Public Works can hire an additional employee instead.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 18, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It's unanimous.
I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise Free Cash the sum of $60,000 to replace the roof at the Essex Water Filtration Plant, including any incidental or related thereto, and to authorize the Board of Public Works to manage appropriated funds and carry out the work. This $60,000 is to, uh, replace the existing asphalt shingle roof on the Water Filtration Plant, which also is the office of the Board of Public Works. The, uh, the funding of this is gonna come from, uh, water free cash, which, um, is part of the billings that, uh, from your, from your water bill that you receive quarterly.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 20.
I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to conduct activities necessary to remain in compliance with the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Regulations of the United States Environmental Protection Agency, including anything incidental or related thereto, and to authorize the Board of Public Works to manage appropriated funds to carry out the work.
Is there a second?
The AP, the EPA is coming, coming through with some pretty aggressive, uh, regulations for, uh, communities to, throughout the country, to, uh, manage their stormwater runoff. In Massachusetts, those, um, regulations are gonna be enforced by, uh, DEP, and the money that we're asking for is to, uh, to, uh, conduct some studies for, for that effort.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 20, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 21.
I, Rob Fitzgibbon, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $38,617 to replenish the Finance Committee's reserve fund for the fiscal year 2020.
Is there a second?
This is an administrative article. This is a reserve fund, um, in case the planning bo, um, excuse me, in case the, uh, Finance Committee is ever asked to, um, cover any unforeseen expenses.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 21, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 22.
I, Guy Bradford, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to be added to the town's stabilization fund. This is just a transfer to our, uh, town stabilization fund. Uh, it is an administrative, uh, move. Uh, it's no outflow of cash from the, from the town at this point.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 22, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It's unanimous. And last but not least, Article 23.
I, Michael Flynn, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash flow the sum of $1,574 to pay bills from fiscal year 2019.
Is there a second? This requires a nine tenths vote, so stick with me here.
This is clearly under the housekeeping, uh, umbrella. A few bills always leak in from other fiscal years that need to be booked appropriately. Uh, this is being taken from free cash flow. Um, and if I remember correctly, historically, there's always a few, a few things that creep in from the last budget.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 23, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous. So, that's nine tenths. Very good. Thank you, everybody. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Non-debating.
Non-debating. We're out.